Call to order, the City of Beaumont City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 6th, at 5:05.
And the closed session has to be specifically opened as the Beaumont City Council and the Beaumont Financing Authority?
Okay, and do I open that now, or after you take a roll call for open?
Um, either way.
Why don't you go ahead and take the roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Orozco, absent. Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Carroll, she's absent at the moment. And Mayor White?
Here. So now, call to order the meeting of the closed council session of the Beaumont City Council and the Beaumont Finance Authority at 5:05. And we'll start with public comments. Do we have any public comments?
None.
Okay. So we will, before adjourning to closed session, I'll read the items that we're going to consider. Number two, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9, D1, Robert Da et al. versus City of Beaumont, case number 517, CV 00831, JGBDTB. Item number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 and/or 4, consideration of one claim and discussion of possible acceptance, rejection, or settlement of claim. I'm not sure what that last word is.
Scherd.
Scherd. Okay, it's just how it's spelled.
The last name.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, number four, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D1, Ramon Osorio versus City of Beaumont, cases number RIC 161674. And number five, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 and/or 3, one potential case. This matter involves an investigation by the Securities and Exchange Commission. And before we adjourn to closed session, Bob, did you want, Mr. Patterson, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. We'll adjourn to closed session at 5:07. Okay. We'll call back to order the open session of the Beaumont City Council meeting for June 6th, and we'll start with, uh, we'll call to order at 6:11, and we will report from closed session.
Yes, um, is this on? Can you hear me? Okay, uh, this is the report from closed session. First item on the closed session agenda was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9D1, Robert Da et al. versus City of Beaumont, case 517, CV 00831, JGBDTB. And on this matter, the council took action to file a responsive pleading to the complaint that was filed in the Da matter. Mayor White motioned for that, Mr. Lara seconded, and the vote was unanimous by the members of the council who were present, which were Martinez, Carroll, White, and Lara, with Mr. Orozco not being present. The next matter on the closed session agenda was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and/or 4, consideration of one claim and discussion of possible acceptance, rejection, or settlement of claim. This is with regards to scherd, and there was no reportable action taken. The next item on the closed session agenda was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Ramon Osorio versus City of Beaumont, case RIC 1611674. And in that case, no reportable action was taken. And the final item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 9, or 54956.9D2 and/or 3, one potential case. This matter involves an investigation by the Securities and Exchange Commission, and no reportable action was taken. And that ends the report out of the closed session items.
Thank you. I'd like to note, for the record, Nicole, that Ms. Carroll showed up, Ms. Carroll showed up at 5:20 for closed session. And there's no action on any closed session items. Let's do, go ahead and do the roll call.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Orozco is absent. Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Carroll?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here. About an hour before the open session, we came back to open session, we received a, a letter from Mr. Orozco's attorney, and with a statement from Mr. Orozco, and Nicole, I'd like you to read that.
Okay. To Mayor Lloyd White and fellow members of the city council from Marco Orozco, dated June 6, 2017, regarding leave of absence from city council. As you know, I have been indicted by the County of Riverside. I vehemently deny all claims of misconduct, and I am fully committed to defending myself against the allegations. There are critics calling for my resignation. I have no intention to do so. The message that I would be sending to the voters of the city would be contrary to my resolve to prove my innocence and fulfill my, fulfill my promise to continue my work on their behalf. In addition, a resignation would be a betrayal of my supporters who have continued to stand by me. Nevertheless, I am mindful of the distractions created by the indictment. Absent a conclusion of the criminal proceedings, I am painfully aware that my presence at a council meeting would create a disruptive atmosphere that would hinder the important business of the city. For that reason, although not resigning my seat on the council, I am voluntarily and reluctantly taking a leave of absence pending my successful defense of the allegations against me.
And after reading that, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, do not grant a request for excused absence, and that we, I move that this is an unexcused absence for Mr. Orozco today.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Now we'll move on to pledge of allegiance. You please stand and join us. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have an invocation by Fire Champ Lynn Hunter.
Will you bow your heads with me? Lord, thank you for those in attendance tonight. Lord, I come to you with a heavy heart. Again, our city is being highlighted in the news, in a negative manner. I pray that these issues would not distract from the governing of our city. I pray that you would continue to grant the city council wisdom to put forth their willingness to be transparent in current, past, and future practices. May the citizens hold on to the belief that transparency will continue in these difficult times ahead. Lord, I pray for our mayor and assembled city council tonight. I pray that you would grant them wisdom and the ability to work together to govern the needs of the citizens of Beaumont, and for the agenda that is set before them tonight. It's in your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Nope. Okay. I want to move on to item number one, which is announcements, under announcements, recognitions, proclamations, and correspondence. This is a staff report. I'd like to do the staff report first, and then, are there any comments on this item? Item number one?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then, seeing no public comments, um, the council will have an opportunity to comment on this item as well.
Thank you, Mayor. In your staff report, we did provide you a statement from our city attorney. I'd asked the attorney to research the question with regard to council's authority to be able to remove and replace a member of the council. And so, that was really in line of some of the comments that were made at the May 16th, 2017 city council meeting. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Bob to work through the statement.
Right. So the city attorney's office looked into the question that was presented at the May 16th meeting of the Beaumont City Council meeting, and, uh, members of the public indicated that the city council should consider removing one of the current council members due to a recent criminal indictment issued by the Riverside County Grand Jury. And after doing our research, we concluded as follows. Contrary to the statements made at the May 16th council meeting, a city council does not have the power to remove one of its members based on an indictment alone. However, the Government Code does provide that an office becomes vacant upon the official's conviction of a felony, or of any offense involving a violation of his or her official duties. So to underline, under the Government Code, a conviction of a felony, uh, or offense involving a violation of the public official's duties is required rather than, uh, an indictment. That's the end of the statement.
Are there any questions for legal at this point? So we'll move on to comments. Um, let me start by saying that this item was placed on the agenda in response to our last council meeting, and we were unable at that time to respond because it was not agendized item. And we wanted to give the community an opportunity to come out and speak again in a format where we could reply and respond. So I'd like to go first. I have written a statement, and this statement, I, I wrote it before we had received any notification from Mr. Orozco. And this is actually a statement to Mr. Orozco. Mark, I wouldn't wish upon anyone what you're going through now. I can't imagine having to consider the possibility of losing my freedom or access to my wife and kids, no matter how short a time. My family would be my highest priority. All my attention should be focused on my defense and protecting my family. When we took our oath in 2014, we committed to doing what was best for the city. We talked about promoting transparency, honesty, and integrity when deciding what was the best for the city. Since then, the three of us have accomplished more than anyone could have ever imagined. The council's primary concern must still be what is best for the city of Beaumont. Preserving all that we have accomplished on council and maintaining the gains we've made in renewing the community's trust and confidence will be critical to overcome the challenges we have ahead of us. Please don't forget the commitment you made in 2014, the accomplishments we shared since, and what is still ahead for the city of Beaumont and our citizens. Once the transcripts are fully disseminated, the public and the press will focus on the contents of the testimony and evaluate whether you're honoring your commitment to what, to do what is best for the citizens of Beaumont. There will be more and louder calls for you to resign. I'd like you to not only consider how that will impact the city's ability to continue to move forward, but how the public scrutiny of you holding on to your council seat, considering what they learned from the transcripts, will affect your time and the energy you need to dedicate to protecting your family and your freedom. The purpose of this statement is to remind you of the commitment you made to the citizens, and ask you to put your family first, and your commitment to serving your community second. I believe it is in the best interest of both your family and the city of Beaumont that you step down. Please consider that whatever you decide, the timing of your decision will be important to determining how the progress we've made over the last two years is judged in the future, and what was your involvement in that progress. Anybody else?
I do.
Mr. Lara?
First of all, I just want to make sure that you understand that regardless of what happens in the future, my, my commitment to our citizens is focused on those things that I can control. I will continue to work with my fellow council members to do the best job that I can for our city. And based on what's just been explained to us, it's clear that council cannot remove another council member. However, understanding that a resignation is neither an admission of guilt or innocence, an ongoing indictment will continue to cast a dark shadow over all future council meetings. Therefore, I would respectfully request from Mr. Councilmember Orozco that he resign his seat on the city council, so that we can move forward and continue to do the business of the city. Thank you.
Ms. Carroll, or Mr. Martinez? Ms. Carroll, go ahead.
I did not do a written, um, preparation for tonight, but, um, in light of the letter, in light of going through the transcripts, and in light of all of the work that needs to be continued for the city, it's put a pall on the progressive progress that has been made, and how much the ship has been righted to have an empty seat there and to have an absent council member that is under indictment. And I believe it's in the best interest of the citizens for Councilmember Orozco to step down. And I wish we didn't have to have that choice. I wish we didn't have to have the situation, but we do, and it requires leadership to make the decisions that are best for the city. And I request that you do so. Thank you.
Again, I just, in light of the letter that I just, um, heard, I just wrote down a little brief message I like to give Mr. Orozco as well. I believe the city as an entity is bigger than any one person. Regardless of innocence or guilt, please consider your decision and its effects on the business and well-being of the city, and consider the resignation of your seat. And let me finish by saying, one of the purposes of doing this tonight, and having the opportunity to give the community one more chance to, um, weigh in and allow us to make our comments, um, this council is determined to move forward. We will not be distracted. We still have the promise not to be discussing the details of this case, and we consider our business on this issue complete, and we will no longer be, um, bringing this up. Doesn't stop public comments, but from this point of view, we have more important issues that we need to work through, and that's going to take our undivided attention, and so we will, we will remain undistracted moving forward. And that should do it on this item.
Mayor, I do have a slip that was just turned in for item one, but I can add it to public comments.
Right, why don't we go to public comments and let that speaker speak first in the public comments? So we will open public comments at 6:37, and I'll start with this statement. Any one person may address the city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give to the city clerk. There's a three-minute time limit on public comments. There'll be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. And our first speaker is?
Mayor Ball?
Mayor, council, good evening. I apologize for being late, and I, I know some things have happened, and I'm not privy to yet this point. However, I did wish to speak on item number one. We live in a republic, as I've said many, many times, and that is the people doing the people's business. And this people's business works through representation only when we have honest men and women with integrity. We need to move forward, but we can best move forward by having a new council member appointed, and then, or if not, then maybe perhaps the citizens will take it into their own hands to, uh, start something to move it forward. But we need to regain the trust. I appreciate what you do on behalf of the city, but it needs to be done with honesty and integrity and an open policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ball. Next.
Next speaker is Ann Connors.
I'm going to change the subject.
Okay.
Ann Connors, 813-0. I spoke to you about this problem on February 21, and now I'm angry. I'm a 78-year-old arthritic with a 12-year-old indoor cat. Our life has turned into a nightmare that I want corrected. Two brothers live next door to us. They feed cats by putting food on paper plates around their front door. These cats proceed to my house since the front yard is not fenced on my side. These cats dug into my new grass. They often spray my doors. They try to kill the birds I feed. They try to reach my cat, who sits in the windows of a closed-in patio. I'm constantly having to chase these cats and being interrupted for meals, reading, whatever, and I'm constantly on edge. Friday night, I disengaged a cat from a month's-old window screen. Saturday morning, my patio smelled from spraying, and yesterday, there were bird feathers in my yard with a cat that had to be driven off. Your current code on cats states that they cannot do this. Your ACO spoke with the homeowner, and he admitted doing it, and the ACO saw the paper plates. The neighbor acknowledged the ACO's reasons to stop it, but declined to do so. My options are to stop feeding birds, both of us stay in the house all the time, and wash my doors continually, or I can pay the city $20 for a trap with limited usage as to number of days, put a sign in my yard telling everyone I'm an evil cat trapper, and go into a lifetime of trapping cats. I cannot even carry a cat trap, much less with a cat in it. And when I did trap one, placed by the ACO, it took a huge emotional toll on me. These are my options because they refuse to obey the law. The thing to tell these guys, preferably while in a police uniform, is that their behavior is against the law, so knock it off. The code should include punishment for failure willingly, failure to comply, and they should be required to turn in all the cats in a specified time. There are going to be more cats as they have kittens. And that, along with the fact that I am being victimized constantly, is reason to do this now. I'm sure there are more ideas for changing the code to put the onus on the lawbreaker and not the victim, and it should be done now because this, dear people, is not just unfair. It's insane. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connors. Uh, Mr. Pardon, can we address this issue and have you either come to a resolution with Ms. Connors, or bring it back to council for us to discuss on an agendized item?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Next speaker, Frank M. I don't know if you're listening.
Meneses.
Yes, that's.
Good evening, Mayor White and, uh, council members and staff. My name is Frank Meneses. I, um, I live at 13187 Blade Street here in Beaumont. Uh, I'm here to, uh, speak to you about my concerns regarding the development of the Olive Wood Project, formerly known as Heartland. Um, a month or so ago, I saw extensive grading going on on the property, and so, and because I personally seen a lot of traffic congestion on Oak Valley Bridge, I thought to myself, how could more units be approved when there's already a significant traffic problem there? So I decided to do some research, and I went over the environmental impact report and specific plan, and I found, uh, extensive language that construed in a fair and simple manner, uh, clearly indicates that the project, including the first phase, should not be proceeding at this time without the Petrerro and SR60 interchange. And I know there's plans to, to put that interchange in, but it's a little premature. Uh, I read the EIR, and I read the findings of fact that the, that the council approved in 1994, uh, and I'll read some of the language to you. Development of the project will be accommodated by the planned circulation system as illustrated in the draft EIR. Construction of the first phase will require interchange improvements at Petrerro and SR60. On page 13, it says most critical is, is for the project is the SR60 and Petrerro Boulevard interchange. In the specific plan, it says that, um, interim improvements are anticipate, anticipated, which would permit Heartland to move ahead in the development process. Uh, and there's other languages, uh, in the specific plan that a phase can only move forward through the development phase if adequate infrastructure is available, including circulation improvements as prescribed in the Heartland EIR. Uh, clearly, uh, the city should not be allowing this project to move forward. It turns CEQA upside down, California Environmental Quality Act. You're ignoring the findings that your predecessors did. Uh, simply staying, saying that they're going to pay fees is insufficient. That doesn't guarantee that the interchange is going to go in. What's going to happen is you're going to, if it doesn't go in, and there's a lot of pitfalls in that agreement, if, if it, if it isn't built, there's going to be six significant impacts on that bridge at Oak Valley, and so it should not proceed. Uh, you probably, probably can't do anything about the grading permits, but you could withhold building permits. Uh, so, uh, my time is getting close. Uh, I sent in emails. I believe you've all gotten them. I want to make those part of the public record. I request that you discuss this in closed session, and instruct your city attorney to review and report to you on this matter, uh, for your action later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pardon, we can make those emails part of the public record?
Typically, you don't include or attach other items to your minutes, to your public record, but they are documented. You've received those, and it's our part of our, uh, public information.
So a public records request would, uh, return those emails then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if you could consult with Mr. Pinkney as to, um, whether or not, um, the closed session is the proper direction to take at this point?
Sure.
Appreciate that.
You bet.
Okay, next?
Bonnie Stewart?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Bonnie Stewart. I'm the co-chair of the No Way Gateway Community Group. And you may remember that last January, you voted to have a letter written regarding the draft EIR for what was, used to be Gateway is now San Gregorio Crossing. It's the warehouse project to be built on Cherry Valley Boulevard. All right. So, fast forward to May 26th, um, we received notice that there is a recirculated draft EIR. And, um, what this means is that none of the letters, including your letter, will be included in the final EIR, because they've recirculated, and now we have 45 days to go through the whole process again, and that's why I'm here tonight. Um, there, we've had a look at comparing the old and new, and there are very, very few changes in this new recirculated, uh, draft. So we think that this is basically a developer's trick to make us go through the whole thing again, and, um, come up with the same letters that we did before, or the number and the, you know, the, all the very important groups, like yourselves, that sent letters. And it's, it's a little hard to do that, but we are trying. So by July 10th, we have to have letters back into them, commending on this new recirculation draft. What I am requesting is that the council place, um, an item on your next agenda to consider rescinding the original letter that you wrote. And we think that all your comments in that letter are still pertinent, and so that is our request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The deadline to getting the letter back in was July 10th, or dark July 4th, correct?
Correct.
Um, so is there a consensus with council to revisit this in the next, uh, next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so can we, and we need to be ready to, um, take care of business without having to have another council meeting, since our next one will be after the deadline?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Gail Wallace.
Hi, I'm Gail Wallace, and I live at 540 Edgar here in Beaumont. For years, I rode my bicycle all around this town, not noticing that there were no crosswalks to go from block to block. There were no, the sidewalks were terrible. I got into a bicycle accident on Mother's Day, and now I'm pushing a walker. I can't ride my bike for quite a while. And I can't believe the, I'm not sure if I'm using the correct terminology, okay? But main example is at 6th and Beaumont Avenue, from 76 to McDonald's, that sidewalk right there, where it goes down, drops down for people to walk and go on into the street. There's a three-inch incline. I can't even get my walker down into that approach and go out and across the street. I have to go all the way around the sidewalks, where the cars pull into the parking lot of 76. I can't even legally leave my block where I live because there's no sidewalks. It says no Petec City, no Petec City. I can go from Calif, I can cross at California, I can cross at Beaumont Avenue, we can cross at Palm at Pennsylvania, but we can't get to block to block legally. But I noticed that when I'm walking here, I can go from the block on the other side right here, where the supremato is, to this block, and I can go from this block to that parking lot. Everywhere else, there's no sidewalks. I mean, no crosswalks for people to do any walking, and they're not even smooth for people with handicaps to be able to get on. I almost fell three times because of the sidewalks and that drive, and that approach right there, trying to get here. And it took me almost 18 minutes from 540 Edgar to here, which is ridiculous.
May I get, may I get your last name again?
Wallace, D-L-L-I-S.
Okay. And did you leave your contact information, phone number? Okay. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
No other speakers.
Okay. I'll close public comments at 6:41. And we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. And are there any items that need to be, or anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Item 11 for me. There are no other items, so I'll make a motion.
Hang on one second.
Do you pull 11?
Yeah. Yeah, I had that circled too. Is there an item on here that was continued from last meeting, item 19 last meeting, that was the change order? Is that on here? I didn't think I saw it, but I had a comment from a, which one?
Yeah, I believe it got pulled.
It was pulled in the last meeting. It was an $84,000 change order. And I got a comment from a citizen who said that they saw that we had it back on here, and I couldn't, couldn't find it. So am I?
No, it's not on this agenda.
Okay. Okay, great. You know what I'm talking about, though?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And it hasn't gone through, or, okay.
That's right.
Okay. So now you may make your motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the balance items, 2 through 10.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. I'm sorry, were there any public comments on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Laura.
And just really quickly, I see that we've got three candidates, and we are selecting the lowest bid bidder. The question I have was the concern with the discrepancy between top to the bottom and whether or not they had any references that, and are they good references, or?
Absolutely. Ralph, yes. Ralph Anderson was the lowest bidder, and they had the most references. There's over 29 cities listed in their reference list, from Anaheim to Antioch. I think that's a good diversity right there. You've got a large city. And they're all over the U.S. A lot of California agencies. It's a very, it's going to be very, a lot of work for staff, if you will. Their job analysis questionnaire was the most detailed for staff and supervisors to fill out, so I think they shift some of the workload to staff.
Okay.
That's part of it, trying to understand a little bit more about the job description. And I think just because they do this on such a large scale, they're one of the biggest vendors out there, it looks like, from what I understood. Their three references were Lake Forest, Modesto, and Simi Valley. All gave great reviews, that they were quick, they were timely, they hit their timelines, they were very professional. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because I gave them a very tight timeline on the entire process. I remember having a discussion with the city manager and asked, I said, is that, is this doable? And he said, yeah, absolutely. So it's a very tight timeline. However, they're presenting at the city of Lake Forest in closed session with their council tonight, so they couldn't be here. The others just didn't touch on a lot of things, I think. They just, they just get, and they didn't hit timelines. And they stretched it out, so I think their costs were more relevant because they were longer timelines.
Okay.
Some of it. Other than that, I can't really gauge as to why. And they just didn't have the resources and the references that this company has.
Okay. Well, I think it's good to finally see this on the agenda. I think it's been a long time coming. I just wanted to make sure that you were satisfied with the vendor that was selected, and thank you for that follow-up.
And like I said, we posted it on public purchase, which is new to us, so we had an astronomical amount of interest. I got a lot of emails, I got a lot of phone calls, and the biggest concern with a lot of people was the aggressive timeline, and we said, yeah, we know, Metellus which can do. So that's the direction we went with it.
Thank you very much, Carol.
And before you leave, I also was going to pull this item for a similar concern. And I mentioned earlier the other item that was a large change order. And a citizen reminded me of how business used to be done here, and I've seen it done in other agencies where a, and I'm not, in the other agencies, I don't believe it was the agency that was doing it, but the bid, the contract bid came in significantly lower, and there were change orders that ended up, when you added the change orders back to the bid, that we did, the agency did not get a good deal. And my understanding, and I remember that type of behavior was here in Beaumont before, so I'm glad that Mike asked the questions that he did. But I will be watching closely to see if this does come back for change orders.
And there is, they put a section in here, they flat out, you know, if it goes over the 16-week timeline, if we added anything, if we do anything. They did publicize their rate in here, their hourly rate, what they charge, so they were upfront in regards to that, if it goes outside the scope. The scope was pretty detailed, the RFP was pretty detailed. The classification list is the classification list. We gave them the list of job descriptions. I included several new ones that we anticipated with the new budget, so I don't anticipate any change orders.
And I have confidence in your process here. I just, I just wanted to remind us where we'd been before. And I don't think by definition a change order is wrong. Just, we want to make sure we're doing business the right way.
And Mayor, that 84,000 change order, remember, that was for curb and gutter and sidewalk work because we had some additional dollars already allocated to those improvements. So that was us coming to you to say, hey, would you like to consider a change order to add to that scope of work? So that was us coming to you saying, hey, you know, can we expand that contract to add that additional work? That wasn't the contractor, that was us coming to you.
And I understand that. I just wanted that opportunity, if it was on agenda, to make that case to the community.
But to note too, since maybe there's some concern out there, that contract, we're not going to bring that change order back to you.
Okay.
What we're going to do is we're going to include that scope of work as we look at a paving project for Xenia and for that area back, you know, the additional street work that we're working on over there. So we won't do that through change order. We'll actually look at a complete bid that has paving as well as all the curb and gutter and flat work associated with it as a complete project.
And sort of unrelated but related, we're going to look at other areas in the city that are.
Absolutely.
Like the area that was brought up by the comment.
We sure are.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And real quick, the $99,000 bid, that was for a six-month project. And Grant Thornton, the other $104,000 bidder, was no references, no other cities were in their reference list. It was mostly private sector that they had done work for. Those are our other top two reasons for the pick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve consent item number 11, award contract for classification and compensation study.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. I want to go to item 12, but I guess I don't use computers enough. It's not popping up. You want to come take a look? Oh, wait, wait. It's loading, sorry. It wasn't, honestly, it wasn't loading.
Sure.
It wasn't.
It's our government computer network. Not that Esri stuff.
Right, Mayor.
Are these the Pentium ones that we're using here?
Is that new stuff? We don't have that new stuff, sir.
Mine's almost there. Okay. Okay. So the appointment to the Finance and Audit Committee, do you want to start with a staff report on this? Or should I make comments on this?
No, I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't you? Please.
Okay. The Finance and Audit Committee currently has two vacancies due to recent resignations, and per the municipal code, appointment to the committee shall be made by the city council. At the last appointment in February 2016, council also motioned to appoint two alternate members to fill vacancies if needed. These two alternate member positions are now vacant as well. City Clerk's Office released a notice of recruitment with a deadline to apply of May 26, 2017. The City Clerk's Office has received six applications for consideration and appointment attached in Exhibit A.
Okay. So we have four positions to fill, two regulars and two, are they all, I know there's different classifications. One is, doesn't, most, all of them have to be a resident in Beaumont unless they're a business owner in Beaumont, correct?
All of them have to be members, except there's one position that can be a business owner in Beaumont.
That is not necessarily a resident?
Correct.
And that's one of the vacant positions, one of the two vacant positions, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It can be either or.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Every time I ask Mr. Pinkney, how do we do this, his response is usually, you can do it any way you want. So what, we've done a couple of things over the last few years. We've gone through the process. I'd like to hear from everyone who's here who wants to speak. But we've, in the past, we've gone through the process of nominating one of the people after we've heard them, and we've had to, been able to ask questions. And then if that person doesn't get enough votes, we move on to the, we move on to the next nomination. We also have, in the past, done an item where we each ranked our top four choices in this case, and then we just added up the numbers and did it that way. And we may have done it other ways as well. I personally prefer the second over the first. So is there any consensus or other ideas?
I prefer the second, and I'd prefer, maybe if we could divide it where we do the first two members who we believe are going to sit on the committee, and then do the alternates afterwards? Or do you want to do them all? It's going to be hard to figure out which is which.
Yeah, I would like to do, I think the top two choices would be the first two on.
Okay.
So I would prefer, but what do you guys think?
As long as it's clear which ones we're doing.
I like the second option, and then with what Councilmember Carroll talked about, is we do the, take nominations for the two standing members, and then we'll take nominations for the two alternates, so that it's, there's a clear cut distinction between the two.
So are we ranking for the first two and then ranking for the remaining four? Or are we going to take two, you know, because the first was where we nominate, the second is where we just rank? We probably just rank one through four, I'm assuming. Okay. And your three and four would be all. Okay. And we're going to hear from first, correct? Everyone who wants to speak, it doesn't, if you're not here. Yeah, have to. If they're not here tonight to speak, it doesn't mean that they're not going to be considered. And I suggest we listen to the candidates, ask our questions, and then we'll take a 10-minute break, and we can, during the break, go ahead and do the ranking. Does that sound good? Are we okay with that, Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Okay.
Acceptable.
All right. So let's go in order of the package that we have here.
I hope mine's the same order as yours.
So I think the first one is John Chamberlain. Is he here tonight? Okay, is he a resident of Beaumont? He is, right?
Yeah. He's the one who said he couldn't be here.
Okay. So John's a resident of Beaumont. And number two, the second one up is Joanne Roberts. Ms. Roberts, you're here. Come on up. We're going to set the clock at three minutes, but we'll let you go a little bit over if you need to wrap up.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Roberts. I'm a resident of Beaumont. I've lived here for the past seven years. I moved here from Rialto, lived there for 30 years. I'm a current employee for the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I'm an administrative manager over the grants unit, and I also help with legislation. Before that, I worked three years as a principal accountant for the Sheriff's Department, and I had oversight over accounts receivable, accounts payable, purchasing, payroll, and specialized accounting. Also, I help out in the department with managing budgets. I did also sit on the city of Rialto for 10 years as a citizen on the Budget Committee. So I'm used to doing audits, I'm used to working on budget committees. I've actually managed a sub org part of the sheriff's budget myself as a budget person, or what we call a budgeteer. So I've worked on budgets, I'm very familiar with accounting, I'm very familiar with auditing. My purpose in being here is that I'm, I love the city. I've been here for seven years. I enjoy living in Rialto, I mean, Beaumont. I've been in Rialto so long. I love living here. I am a walker, so I'm out at 5:30 in the morning doing my half marathon practices. And for me, I just want to do what I can to help, and if my skill set will help my city to, you know, come from under this negative cloud we're under, I'm here for that. Just a little bit about myself, I've been married for 37 years. I have six kids, five more adults, one still goes to Beaumont High School. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in finance. My master's degree is in management. I've also completed the county's Leadership Academy, and I've recently completed the District Attorney Citizens Academy. So hopefully, my skill set can be of some help to the city, and this is my second go around trying to get on the other than finance committee. So hopefully, you guys will consider that. I think what I have to offer would be help to the city.
Hang on. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Roberts? Okay. Thank you. Next is Jason Andrews. Are you here tonight? All right. Number, the following one is David Vanderpool. All right, number, the following one is David Vanderpool. Just refreshing my memory as to who was who.
Okay.
Stephen Martino, I think, is next.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to go back, so. Stephen Martino, are you here tonight? Hi.
I just recently became aware last month about the opening, and I thought, as I was here questioning different questions on the budget and melon reducing the taxes, that instead of just getting involved and asking questions at the meeting, that I just submit my application. Because I do have concerns, looked at the budget that was just passed at the recent meeting, and looking at the budgets, projections going forward, past histories, audited and not. I've had quite a bit of experience in capital projects. Last seven years, I've been a capital projects manager for a large health organization, and have financial authority over large capital projects, including their initiation, their development, their execution, construction, and closeout financially at the end. So looking at different budget lines, categories, how they're determined, how they're expended, and how they're audited and closed out later on, I've got quite a bit of experience. Again, just based upon that experience and other business experiences I've had in the past, I thought I would just submit my application. I had looked at some of the others and noticed there's a lot of qualified people in here that have submitted for that, but again, I just wanted to render the application. I do live here in Beaumont, I've lived here approximately five years, moved from Rancho Camanga where I lived there previously for 30 years. Have my own residence here in the town and also some investment properties. And so I'm quite established, is married to the community going forth in my future when I plan to retire here, and I just would offer my application for consideration.
Thank you. Before we ask questions, I just want to comment, this is the third or fourth time I think we've put people on the Finance Audit Committee, and every time, I'm happy because we get a lot of, like you said, qualified people that anyone, I think, would fill the position. But I wanted just to state that every alternate that we've picked has become a member. So it is likely, we don't, it's likely that, and we have a great group of people, it's just that after a year or two, it's time to get someone new, or time to move on for them. So anyways, are there any questions for Mr. Martino?
Just, I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Martino, on, I know that you, it looks like you have a lot of construction management experience as far as, did you also assist in preparation of the budgets? I don't know if I heard that or not, for the construction projects?
I developed the budgets.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, any other questions? Okay. Sorry. All right. And I did notice also that Mr. Andrews also, I'm sorry, Mr. Vanderpool had also said that he would not be here tonight. And the last applicant is Stephen Cooley, I believe, right? Mr. Cooley.
As you stated, my name is Steve Cooley. We've recently moved to Beaumont, we admitted to buy our home almost two years ago, we've been here just a little over a year. I have retired, was an auditor with State of Utah, and audited several entities in their regulatory process in the consumer protection entity. I have audited probably 15,000 entities from very simple things to very, very complex. Prior to that, I worked for a property management company that built and owned most of the malls along the Intermountain West, and about 30 properties along the Pacific Coast, a lot of in the Northwest than in California. So I have seen the budgeting process, I've seen government budgeting, worked with it all. My primary reason and concern to be here is I believe I have skills and abilities that can help the council make decisions, give information that would be pertinent to the council, and as a retiree, I have the time to do it, and I'm looking for something to put that forward, too. Doesn't appear on my application, my resume, but I'm also a retired police officer, I spent the first several years in law enforcement, did a fair amount with budgeting there. Wanted to do something different, somehow I ended up in the accounting world and pulled back into the regulatory. So I've seen a lot of governments, I've worked for a half a dozen governments, I volunteered on a number of government processes. I'm real familiar with the budgeting process, with requests for proposals, following those proposals to make sure that they function right. One of the comments that was made tonight about the add-ons that come after the fact and totally blow out the budget process, I'm familiar with that, I've seen that. When I retired, I gave up my certification as a certified fraud examiner, and that's part of what I've done, is watch those crazy things to see how the low bidder can end up being by far the biggest bidder. Again, I just want to offer my expertise and want to see the city totally flip-flop and be an exciting place. We followed this city for 10 years, knew this is where we're going to retire, all of our children live here, and this was the most optimal place for us to live. I just want to give back.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Cooley? Sure, Ms. Carroll.
I'm going to ask you, but I also want to make it clear to all of the other candidates who've applied, you, do you know this is not a compensated position?
Absolutely.
It's totally volunteer, okay.
Absolutely.
I just want to make that clear, because when we first started this process, it wasn't that clear to some of the people that applied, and, so thank you for, and, you know, it does require that volunteer effort, that really wants to do it for the good of the city, and what the mayor said is correct. We do really expect a strong and good committee to really do their work, and, so we have pretty good standards for them.
It's the only way a council can function. There's just, there's too much and requires too much expertise that, in this case, five people just don't, aren't likely to have. And that's what I want to do, is just be some support, give you information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. And one more statement regarding the alternates. All of the alternates before in the past have shown up for every meeting, almost every meeting, and we welcome their input. All they aren't able to do is to vote on items, but it's nice to have alternates that are familiar with our system and our program. So, so at this time, are there any questions for any of the candidates that have been up there? Okay, so let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break, we'll come back at seven, we'll make it 15, so it's also a break for others. So we'll come back at 7:25. Back to order at 7:24. All right, so you've got your table there. Thank you. And I will go first, and remember, we're going to give a four to our top choice and a three, two, one, to our next four choices. Okay?
Say that one more time.
A four for your top choice.
Okay.
And then a three for your second choice, and a two for the, and then whatever the totals are, is the way we'll go.
Okay.
Okay. So I have, for Stephen Martino, a four. For Joanne Roberts, a three. For Steve Cooley, a two. And John Chamberlain, a one.
For Steve Cooley, I have a four. For Joanne Roberts, I have a three. For Steve Martino, I have two. And for John Chamberlain, I have one.
Next up is Mike Lara.
Okay. For Steve Cooley, I have a four. Joanne Roberts, I have a three. John Chamberlain, I have a two. And Stephen Martino, I have a one.
And Mr. Martinez?
Four. Go ahead. For Joanne Roberts, I have a four. For Stephen Cooley, I have a three. For Stephen Martino, I have a two. And for David Vanderpool, I have a one.
So it looks like Joanne has a 13, Steve Cooley has 13, Stephen Martino has nine, and John Chamberlain has four.
Okay, I move that we appoint Steve Cooley and Joanne Roberts to the Audit and Finance Committee, and we appoint Stephen Martino and John Chamberlain as alternates.
I'll second.
Do we need to be the first on two and second, or just? Because there'll be...
Yes, Mr. Martino will be the first alternate, I'm in my motion.
That's fine. I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
I just want to say that the candidates that we received were phenomenal, and I appreciate the time and energy that everybody put into that, and that's a yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Carroll?
I, yes. Great candidate pool.
Mayor White?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to item number 13. An interim urgency ordinance for a moratorium on the issuance of telecommunication facilities within the public right-of-way. I am, I'm really looking forward to this report. I tried to figure out what this was really all about.
Okay, staff is recommending city council approve an interim urgency ordinance for a moratorium on wireless communication facilities within the right-of-way. Currently, the city's municipal code does not have any regulations for this emerging technology. This ordinance would put a hold on the issuance of any permits for new applications, or applications which do not have a complete application at this time, on the effective date of the ordinance. Basically, what we're seeing is requests to start putting individual poles, or poles in the right-of-way that have a micro antenna. So, so we have no regulation for how many could go on a single street, or which streets we want to see them on. Some communications facilities are looking to put them on existing light poles, but some may not have light poles in the areas they want them, so they're possibly requesting new poles. So what we're trying to do is put a hold on all of this while we can come back to you and have a study session or an agenda item to discuss what other cities have done with this, and see which direction the council and the community wants to go with these new right-of-way cell towers.
So then we would do an ordinance that the Planning Commission would then enforce, is that correct?
Yes, so, well, the, it could be something that goes to Planning Commission for approval, it's something that could be at staff level if we have criteria. So it's all of those things that we'll discuss in the ordinance, how, what you want to be added to the municipal code and how you want it to be enforced.
Ms. Carroll, you have a question?
No, I just want to say, I think it's a great initiative that you did to bring this forward, and I think it's timely, and I don't have any questions, I think it's a great idea.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So when I read this, I know that we have, and we spoke, and I know that we have five applications that are incomplete that are currently in process, but I was confused as to, we're looking, this is a, we don't have any requirements at this point, so it, we may, we have the opportunity now to require both a planning entitlement and an encroachment permit. That's basically what you're talking about, correct?
That could be the direction council goes, is to do it through a separate entitlement process and an encroachment permit, or do a design review through the encroachment permit process, however we decide, however you guys decide when you, when we adopt the final ordinance, the process. You can have some that are by right, like, you know, in zoning, sometimes some things are by right, so like if they're putting it on an existing pole in an industrial zone, it doesn't require this, but if they're putting it on a new pole in these zones, it requires this. So there's all those options that we can look at.
And what I visualize are the huge cell towers that, you know, are massive and would be a hazard, but you're talking...
They're not. They're, most of them that we see are basically, the pole heights vary depending on what they're trying to do. So, for instance, the poles that we've, we've seen that are incomplete applications that came in, one of them is much taller, like a 78-foot high, tall, because that's the one that talks to all the shorter ones, like, I think it's, maybe it's 56, and the rest are the height of about a light pole.
Okay.
And all it is, is it looks like it sticks up a few feet above a streetlight on most of them, and it's small panels just around a regular light pole. So it's not the big trees or anything like that, they're called micro antennas.
Okay.
And so it's just, it's something that cities have been dealing with recently, and we've started to see the applicants that have come in, plus now we're seeing another applicant looking to do the same thing. So there's a concern that if we get all these people wanting all poles in the same place, we don't really have, we don't really have ordinance to decide who goes where and why.
Okay. And there's also a potential, obviously, it's a revenue source, correct? Because it's in our right-of-way?
Yes and no. Some of these are issued utility letters from the CPUC, so they have a right to be in the right-of-way, just like some of the underground utilities that don't pay a rent. If they go on our poles, our poles, you know, our streetlights, there might be a potential to rent our street pole, but that's where we would have to discuss, because we've been looking at the, we've been researching the current application we have, and based on state law, we would not be able to charge a franchise fee for that. So it's more of a regulation that we're looking at in ordinance, but we could establish possibly rental terms, I believe, if they're going on our pole.
Okay.
But not their own pole.
Okay, thank you very much for backing.
Now, are these providing a different service than the poles, the big towers that Mike is talking about?
Yes and no. Some of our providers are providing additional service that they're not able to hit, that's one of my more recent requests, is, is from an existing provider that's on a, has regular cell towers, and I'm guessing they've got some spots that they can fill with smaller towers instead of the big ones. Other providers are looking at future technology as well, like, you know, car technologies that might be able to, in the future, have the capacity to be able to talk to these towers, you know, so if we ever get to, you know, driverless cars and things like these, these are the kinds of poles that will speak to them. So they're, they're providing infrastructure for some future technologies, as well as providing additional cell tower reception.
Now, when I was at the League of Cities last year, I saw a vendor who put these in for cities, and I don't think, I don't know if this is what it was, but they were just added on top of light, existing light poles, is this what we're talking about, some?
Yes, very similar.
And so it's, I've seen some images where it's a net over the city or over an area, or it's a booster.
Yeah, they usually show maps on how their coverage, you know, before we, under the current code for a regular cell tower, we look at coverage maps to make sure that we're not putting excessive number of towers where they're not necessary.
Okay.
Again, we don't have a current code to make some of those determinations, we don't have a current code regarding, you know, co-location, regular cell towers on a regular property require a conditional use permit. So the Planning, Planning Commission is able to look at all of these reasons on why it makes sense to go at that location, but we don't really have that in process under these micro antennas for the right-of-way. So those are all things that we could require and look at, the maps, to look at coverage and make sure that they're not putting it here just because it's there, when really you can get better coverage somewhere else.
Please tell me that Sprint is one of the people putting in the applications. I'm just, I'm just kidding.
One of the applicants is more of a rents to other people as well, so we don't know who would be the ultimate end users on some of them, they're, they're creating the capability for co-location, so we don't have, we don't have a, you know, know who would be on there yet.
And you'd be looking, Mayor, you'd be looking at the possibility of them subleasing too, because I know a lot of them, you know, like the cell tower where they'll put one up, and then they'll sublease that themselves, and...
That is part of the research we're doing. I don't know if that's applicable to these, because they're such small and the heights are limited, I don't know if you try and put two antennas on the same light pole, if one will be too low, because they're already these micro, you know, in height is a concern. So that's part of the research we're going to do to see if we can encourage co-location onto the same tower. onto a s- the same tower, especially if we're going to encourage existing poles. The other thing is, is I don't know how it'll work with our new, you know, standard for, um, streetlights, because with the solar on the top, there's some limitations on- on being able to affix it in the newer areas. So we want to look at all of that and see, um, you know, what we can bring back to you, bring you back some, what other cities are doing, look at some of the points, um, that we like, some of the points we don't like in other cities, and have a conversation with you.
Um, any other questions? I have about three hundred and fifty-six days left on my Sprint contract. So, um, Mr. Patterson, this requires a four-O approval, just four people to vote?
Yes, that's correct. It requires two-thirds of the entire council for passage, and since you have four members present, it would require a unanimous vote.
Okay, great. All right, I'll entertain a motion for this.
I'll make a- go ahead.
Go ahead. Um, I make a motion that we approve staff going back and investigating what the issues are and bringing it back to council for review for an ordinance.
This is actually, we need to approve an interim urgency ordinance for a moratorium on the issuance of the...
Okay.
So moved?
I can reword that.
Okay.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve an ordinance for an interim urgency ordinance of the city of Beaumont enacting a temporary moratorium on the issuance of any permits for new and relocated wireless telecommunications facilities within public right-of-ways pursuant to Government Code Section 65858.
I'll second. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure that we make it clear, there's a public hearing, and I have no speakers for this, but if you want to open and close it?
Yes, let me open the public hearing at, uh, seven thirty-six, and I'll close it at seven thirty-six.
Thank you. And I'll do roll call. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Carol?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, adopt an ordinance to increase sewer connection capacity fee to five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars per equivalent dwelling unit.
I'm a member, councilmember. Last year, city obtained services of NBS to update its, uh, user and capacity fee. The fees were last updated in two thousand and thirty. Since then, we've embarked on, um, major upgrades to our sewer system. Um, NBS has completed a study that- that includes all the costs, that- that's the upgrade to our plant and the brine line, um, uh, brine line construct, uh, project, um, that's needed, uh, for the- for the plant. Tonight, we were presenting either the preliminary, uh, the draft study, um, and also we're requesting the EHO public hearing to amend the ordinance. The ordinance itself needs to be amended for the section that relates to the capacity fee study. There will be second hearing of the ordinance. We will bring the final draft of the study back along with the second hearing of the ordinance, and this fee get- takes into effect, I think goes into effect on July twentieth, thirty days after the second hearing. Kim Beller from NBS is here with a short presentation on the methodology that we use and the- the- how we got from current fee of three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars to five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the capacity fee. Now, that capacity fee reflects connection for one house, one EDU. And then anything that differs from that, there's a calculation for- for that in the study that allows us to capture industrial users or any apartments that have less, um, flows than one EDU. With that, I'll allow the- I'll ask Kim to proceed with her presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and before, just, uh, maybe in her presentation, but what's the current fee that we charge now?
The current fee is three thousand one hundred and ninety-four.
Okay.
For- for an EDU. There is also in our ordinance right now, there are several different fees for different users. What's different going forward is that we're- we're going to be calculating the fees based on the flow and then the strength of the flow. So we'll go through that in the- in- in our presentation, how we'll be calculating the fees going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So, just an overview, short overview of my presentation. I'm going to talk about the- an overview of the methodology used to develop the capacity fees, talk about the assumptions that were made in this study, and then talk about the actual fee calculations, what the fees will be, and, uh, the next steps, process. Slide please. So, just an overview of the connection fee methodology. The American Water Works Association establishes guidelines for industry standards for how to develop connection fees for, uh, utilities. So, um, there's two- two major methods for developing, uh, connection fees. It's a buy-in method and a incremental cost method. So the buy-in method, um, accounts for existing system assets. So there's typically a component in the capacity fee that will, um, you know, uh, make a- future users buy into the existing infrastructure that the city has invested in, in its sewer system. And then the incremental cost method, um, accounts for the expansion facilities that are needed to serve new customers. So, we have done a combination approach in the study, which is typical. So we've- we've put a value on the- the city's existing system that new customers will utilize and, um, allocated appropriate cost of the new system to, um, to serve future users. Next slide. Excellent. So this slide up here shows a table of, um, the capacity that's going to be u- that's being used by existing customers in the existing treatment plant and the capacity that will be used by future users in the- the new plant. So, the new plant will have a capacity of six MGD. Current users are using just over three MGD, and there'll be two-point-eight MGD available for, uh, future connections. Um, so the capacity allocation is fifty-three percent to, um, existing customers, forty-seven percent to new customers. And this allocation percentage is used to allocate costs to each group of customers. And so this slide shows up here the number of customers that, um, you have currently and we will have here in the future. So, um, the city currently has about fifteen thousand EDUs connected to the sewer system. We're projected to add about thirteen thousand five hundred connections, uh, over the next, um, twenty years. So it'll be a total of twenty-eight thousand EDUs connected to the sewer system. So same allocation percentage as on the previous slide. Fifty-three percent of, um, customers are currently connected to the system, forty-seven percent will connect in the future. Next slide, please. Um, so this slide up here shows a table, um, with the existing assets in the sewer system that will be used by future- future customers. So we don't have any of the existing treatment plant assets since a new plant is being built. Um, this- the assets that are listed here are primarily sewer lines, lift stations, monitoring equipment, things like that. Um, I've shown the construction and acquisition here in the table as well, um, the original asset costs, depreciated value, um, and then we also apply a cost inflation factor to bring the- the value of the assets up to today's dollar. If you replace the assets today, what would it cost? So the total system buy-in cost basis is nine-point-five million dollars at the far, far right of this table at the bottom. Next slide, please. And so this- this table here shows how that nine-point-five million dollars is allocated to existing and future users. We're using the fifty-three, forty-seven percent allocation, I mentioned on the previous two slides. So the component that gets included in the basis for the capacity fee is the forty-seven percent that's allocated to future users. So, in total, four-point-five or four-point-four-eight million dollars in existing system asset costs are allocated to future users. So there's that much capacity in the existing sewer system to serve those new users. Next slide, please. And this slide up here shows the planned assets. So, at the top, we have eighteen million dollars in sewer lines that are going to be needed to serve future users. Those costs are allocated in total to future connections. The other, um, assets are related to the wastewater treatment plant and, um, brine line costs, so the- the salt mitigation costs. And those costs are allocated forty-seven percent to future users. It is a total of a hundred and fifteen million dollars in- in capital costs. Um, the allocation to new customers is sixty-four-point-one-eight million dollars. So this is the- this is included in the cost basis for that, um, capacity fee. Next slide, please. Um, in the, uh, analysis, we also make an adjustment for outstanding debt and cash. So the city doesn't have any outstanding debt, um, for its sewer utility anymore, um, but we do have cash reserves. And so cash reserves are treated as an asset. They've been built up by existing customers, so it's something that new customers need to buy into. Um, when we started this set- study, at the beginning of the fiscal year, there were six hundred and seventy thousand dollars approximately in reserves. Um, so that was allocated in the same manner as existing assets. Forty-seven percent of that is allocated to future customers, for a total of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in- in cash assets. Slide please. And so this- this table here shows a summary of the- the cost basis for the capacity fee. So we have the summary, we have the existing system buy-in component of four-point-four-eight million dollars. We have the future system development component. These are all the costs that are allocated to future users, sixty-four-point-one-eight million dollars, for a total of sixty-eight-point-six million in assets, um, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in cash reserves, for the total cost basis of sixty-eight-point-nine million dollars. And so when we develop the capacity fee, we- we out- we get that total sum, so the sixty-eight-point-nine million dollars, and just divide it by the number of EDUs that are expected to get connected to the system. It's a pretty simple math. So if we go to the next slide, we'll get the dollar amount per EDU. So if we take that sixty-eight-point-nine million dollars and divide it by the thirteen thousand four hundred connections that are expected next to the city's sewer system, we get, um, five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars per EDU for new connections. So this is- this fee will only apply to new customers or customers that, if they're upsizing their connection for any reason. So that's for a one EDU. So one EDU is equal to a single-family home. Um, for, uh, commercial customers or non-single-family residential customers, um, we are going to- the fee will be based on their equivalency to an EDU. So what we'll do is look at the flow and strength components of what, um, the- the business would put into the, um, sewer system, you know, it's going to go through the collection system and be treated, and, um, we- we equate that to an EDU. So this table up here shows how that will be calculated. Um, a- a single-family home, one EDU, um, standard values are, they put about two hundred and ten gallons per day into the sewer system. Their strengths, uh, are about two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter for BOD and TSS. And so when the- when the new customer connects, um, the city will look at their- their projected use, apply industry standards to develop, um, values to- to determine what their flow and strength will be, um, and equate that to one EDU. And so, for- for one EDU, the, um, the- the components to the- the five hundred, five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars is shown in the- the second to the last, the last row. So we have, um, three thousand seventy-five dollars is the- the portion that goes toward flow, and one thousand twenty-five goes to strength, well, then BOD, TSS components. Any questions? Next slide, please. Um, this slide here shows a chart that shows a comparison of the fees in the local area. And so, um, the city of Beaumont's fee is on the low- the low end right now at three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars per EDU. It's increasing by almost two thousand dollars per EDU. Um, and you can see how that will change, the gray and the green bars in this chart. So, um, you'll still stay among, um, the lower- lower-cost agencies in the region.
So I have a question for you. First of all, this ordinance doesn't do anything to increase, um, the fees or services for costs for any of the existing, uh, connections right now?
No. So monthly sewer rates, no, this does not change the sewer rates. This is just the fees that new development pays when they connect.
Okay. Any other- any questions?
I do have a couple. On- on page ten, on your planned assets, you- you show the incremental cost of eighteen million, the new customers will pick up for trunk lines?
Yes.
In this picture? Is that outside of what a developer would install under their bond amounts or CFD?
So if- if a developer installed a portion of that infrastructure, they would get credit through their fees.
Okay.
So for example, a developer comes in and has a million in fees that they need to pay, and then they come in and they're upgrading on this- this list that we have, and they come in a half a million dollar worth of improvement, so they will get a credit for half a million dollar worth of fees.
Okay.
But they ha- it has to be on that list, and it has to be a special, um, project.
Okay. Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, if you have another question for, um, here, I was about to sit down, so...
Oh, yeah, um, I think it's, Mary, it's on the calculation for commercial facilities for EDU. On the- when you calculate, looking at it, it doesn't look like you take fixture units, you know, three toilets, two sinks, kitchen sink, into consideration. Is it- is it bodies? The number of people that you anticipate? Or- because the- the concern that I have is how are we going to transition to a commercial rate from a- from a EDU, a single EDU?
So what you do is you look at the actual flow and strength of the wastewater that is going to be going into the system. So, um, fixture units could be used to determine the actual flow that would be going, um, coming out from the customer, or, um, uh, the city would also look at, just look at water consumption, water consumption data from the, uh, water district.
Okay.
So there won't be, you don't have to, I'm not going to go through the process, count fixture units. Yeah? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So multifamily housing is considered commercial?
It's non- it's- it's not single-family residential, so a multifamily residential unit would typically have a- a fee that is less than a single-family home, because it's typically less capacity. So, you know, a three-to-four-bedroom home is- is less capacity needed compared to an apartment unit.
Okay, so it- but you don't judge it by the flow on a multifamily, like?
Yes.
Eight units, ten units, twelve units, and you just have a lesser amount that you put into the equation for the flow? Is that it?
The- the flow would be calculated, um, based on, um, guidelines from the state for each connecting customer. That's- that's not a single-family home.
I'm- I'm wondering if what, uh, Ms. Carol might be asking is, a single-family resident is not going to be equal to a single apartment, but if an apartment complex has four or five, those individual four or five will be smaller than a single-family resident, but the whole unit, the whole, um, the whole, uh, four, five...
The impact?
Yeah, multifamily unit would be higher than a single-family home, right?
But, yeah, so what we'll do is, we will have, it would be, uh, percentage of the EDU fee per- per, uh, per, uh, unit. So if there's ten units, and it's point seven-five percent, so then we'll point seven-five times ten, seven-hundred, yeah. That's how we'll calculate for, so it is less for an apartment.
For one apartment, but not for a whole multifamily building?
No, it's- it's per apartment, that case. So it's different based on the different users. So a laundry coming in has- has different way to calculate, and then, uh, a restaurant coming in has a different way to calculate, because they have grease traps, and depending on, you know, how many kitchens they will have and how many seating they will have, same thing, schools are different. So there are industry standards for each calculation. Then there- then there is opportunities for larger industrial users to put in pretreatment. So if somebody comes in and has, uh, a large fee, uh, they're doing bottling plan, for example, and they come in to pretreatment, now they can come in with new data, they can provide us with data, and then we can reduce their fee, because now what they've done is they've taken care of some of the issues at the... taken care of some of the issues at their plant. So, so all of this stuff is built into the new way we're calculating the fees.
And this increase is taking into, I mean, we're doing this to make sure that we can pay for future use in a future plant, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, a future expansion, in other words.
A future expansion is included, forty-seven and fifty-three split, which is always included. We are also proceeding with doing a user fee study, and that will, so the fifty-three percent of existing residents, they'll have to pay their fair share through the user fee study. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a connection fee type of...
Right. What, the direction I was going is, does this, in order for us to move forward as we're planning to build the expansion, since we're basing this on future homes, does this require or expect a certain percentage of growth over that period? In other words, if, if we don't grow as fast the first five years, are we not going to be at a point where we're properly assessing what the fee should be?
The, the, that's, no, the fee, this fee is based on the impact that EDU has on our system. So it doesn't, it doesn't change if there is not enough users coming in. What it does, it looks at next twenty years, and it comes up with a reasonable fee for connection, and then it will do a user fee. We use that study to get financing for the project. And then, and then our basis has to be reasonable. We are, for example, have to look back and say, what growth has been coming to the city, and what do we expect going forward? And then accordingly, we, we finance the, the project that we're going to be building. So what we're looking at is, I think roughly three hundred, I believe, three hundred homes per, per year is what we projected into the, into the study. And then there is a growth on commercial side, industrial side.
Okay, Mr. Pardon, you wanted to add something?
Well, I was just going to say, I think one of the good things about the way this study is structured is that it's looking, we know what plant capacity we need to do within the next fifteen years, within the next twenty-five to thirty years. And so there's a fixed amount of capacity that that plant can treat. And so we've looked at what the impact per EDU will be on the plant, so now we know how many EDUs we can actually serve. And so then we quantify that into a dollar value. One of the things that we'll be looking at will be an annual review of the fee, which will go back and say, okay, how are we tracking with regard to our projected development? You know, are we on track? But the, the good thing is, I think we're conservative in our estimates, so we may actually build out a little bit faster than what we're projecting, at least in the near term, which allows us to recalibrate and readjust. So it, it works in balance to the overall capacity expansion that we're looking at the plant, to the type of development that we are anticipating seeing in the city.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Martinez, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Carroll.
I'm sorry, did you submit, oh.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just had a question. So if we're going to compare, let's say Beaumont to Manning, and you see the big difference, we would say that not only, of course, you have that difference in development, but on the future system developments, we're using those higher numbers based on our numbers for expansion with the sewer treatment plan?
That, that's a good, that's a good thought, because what we're looking at is banning, it is not, banning is not treating the same way we're treating. They're not under the same restriction that we are in. They don't discharge into the same basin that we discharge into. What's more closer to us is what Yucaypa has done. So if you look at Yucaypa's fee, it's eighty-two twenty-one per EDU. And that, and then it's reflective of what we presented earlier this year to City Council, where we said, it'll be cheaper to do these improvements at our system. And it is cheaper, because what we're looking at is, we're retaining some of the system that was already there, we're using it. Going to Yucaypa, it would, the fee would be eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one for every new home that came in. So, so the comparison more closely to what we are doing is East Valley Water Ristick or Yucaypa, not, not banning or Reddell. Reddell is very close to, to the Brine Line, and, you know, we have a significant amount of construction that we need to do for the Brine Line. So, so those costs are reflected in the five thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
And the reason I bring that up is just simply because, you know, the proximity of the cities, and so is the tendency of the public to compare the, you know, their neighbor city to what you're doing. So that, thank you for that, and it gives me a reference.
Ms. Carroll.
And so the, the new fee is for new building. Would it also apply if somebody was switching from septic system to hookup to the sewer system? Would it be the same fee for them?
It's the same fee for them. It's, it's a new customer. As long as the customer is not there, it doesn't matter if they had a septic or not, or if somebody is coming in, building a new house. To us, it's a new customer.
And the, the chart for the capacity fee calculation for non-single-family residence customers, that would include schools also and things like that, right? So, okay, thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'll open the public hearing. And we'll open the public hearing at eight o'clock.
I don't have any requests.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Did you want to speak, Mr. Martinez? Sure, come on up.
Based upon a projected growth of thirteen thousand dollars over the next twenty years, and the, where does the funds go when it's collected by the city? Does it go into a reserve fund that's kept as a capital fund? It's not used operationally, or is it kept reserved?
It goes to capital.
Goes to capital?
Goes to capital, that's right.
So it, it'll build up until there's a planned approved acceptable capital project? That total amount of the, of the hookup fee, or just the percentage that's designated?
These are restricted funds. They can all be applied to the specific improvements for which the fees were calculated.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else would like to ask a question? All right, we'll close the public hearing at eight oh one. And if there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion. I will move to adopt item fourteen, an ordinance to increase sewer connection capacity fee to fifty-one twenty-five per equivalent dwelling unit.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. And we'll move on to item fifteen, opposition to Proposition sixty-four, Adult Use of Marijuana Act Trailer Bill.
Yes, this really came to us through the League of California Cities as an alert. And what is, under consideration at this point is a trailer bill, which really, again, is the application element to Prop sixty-four, which was passed in this last general election. Again, Prop sixty-four was for the adult use of marijuana for non-medicinal purposes. So the trailer bill, the genesis of it was that, there's a series of propositions that have been passed that really, over the last several years, that really looked at medical marijuana. With the Prop sixty-four passage, there were some inconsistencies between Prop sixty-four and the other medical marijuana bills that were out there. And so the purpose of the trailer bill was to really resolve those conflicts, and really to create a single system by which Prop sixty-four, as well as the other propositions, could be enacted. And so that was the understanding. So with this trailer bill, there's a lot of unexpected issues that came forward as this trailer bill was crafted. And there's some elements to this trailer bill that really eliminate the ability of a city to be able to provide local control for marijuana development, retail storefronts, all the way through. And so one of the bases by which Prop sixty-four was really presented to the voters was that, hey, there's a system in place to be able to provide for a safe use and a safe application for that. And cities had the ability to be able to apply fire code, they had the ability to be able to apply some zoning, the ability to apply some basic health and safety standards to new developers that were coming in. In addition to that, there was ability to be able to provide for certification and licensing. You know, all those things are now things that are being severely eliminated through the trailer bill. The other element of the trailer, of the Prop sixty-four was that cities were supposed to be able to establish local fees and local taxes, basically, on these users. And so the primary purpose of those dollars, really, for a local level, was to try to mitigate the effects of marijuana usage within the population. And so there's a provision in the trailer bill, which basically allows an individual to be able to get a doctor's note that says, hey, we really recommend that this person use marijuana for non-recreational purposes. Well, that really gets the whole ability of local government to be able to assess those taxes on those sales. Because non-medical marijuana sales, or I'm sorry, medical marijuana sales are actually not subject to that local tax. It's only for the recreational or the, the non-medical use. So there's a severe limit with regard to the retail income that the cities were expecting of the sales tax. So as a result, really, it has a, a really significant effect on what the voters were really, thought they were voting for, in addition to the overall implication to cities. So we've had a conversation here, and we're planning to come to you on June twentieth with an ordinance to basically curtail or disallow the use of medical marijuana as a business here within our community. So you say, well, why do we care? Well, we do care a lot, because, you know, going on into the future, you know, we have communities around us that may decide that this is a viable business that they want to have established. If they can't control it, if they can't regulate it, that has an impact on us. If those communities are not receiving the dollars that were coming in, which were to help mitigate the effects of these businesses and this use within their community, again, that has an effect on us. You know, we're going to have our residents who may legally go, you know, utilize those businesses in this area. It's going to have an effect on us socially, it's going to have an effect on us from a legal perspective, from a law enforcement perspective. So I, I think, you know, inherently, we really need to take a position with regard to this particular bill. So what we have in here really is a letter that's been drafted. We've used the base letter that the League of Cities has put together. We've modified that to be appropriate, more appropriate to our community. So really, our recommendation to council is to vote to oppose the trailer bill as presented, and to authorize the mayor to execute and submit a formal letter to the governor stating the city's opposition to that. So council, turn it back to you for questions or comments.
My item is still loading.
Oh.
We should click on the PDF version.
What's that?
There's a PDF version down below.
This is the government system, sir. This is mine.
Don't get me started on that.
This is mine, right here, here's my laptop.
The reason I needed that to load, are we supposed to do a public hearing on this? This is not a public hearing, I don't think.
No, sir, it's not.
Okay. So are there any questions or comments regarding this issue? This is not at all indicating this council's position for or against changing the current position of the city on marijuana use, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, are there any?
Public comment?
Public comment, thank you. Do you have any public comment on this?
None.
We do not, okay. I'll entertain a motion unless there's more comments.
I'll make a motion to oppose to Proposition sixty-four, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act Trailer Bill. And I authorize the mayor to, I make a recommendation to authorize the mayor to execute and submit the attached letter of opposition to Governor Brown.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
All right, item sixteen, designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Do we need a staff report, or do you want me to read? I can't read it.
Sorry. The League of California Cities two thousand seventeen Annual Conference is scheduled for September thirteenth through fifteenth in Sacramento. An important part of the annual conference is the annual business meeting scheduled for Friday, September fifteenth, at the Sacramento Convention Center. At this meeting, the league membership considers and takes action on resolutions that establish league policy. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the city must designate a voting delegate, and the city may also appoint up to two alternate voting delegates, one who may vote in the event that the designated voting delegate is unable to serve in that capacity. And that's it. Once, once chosen, then we will, then I'll work to register the attendees.
Okay, before we move on this item, the last time we brought up this California League of Cities conference in September, I believe it is, there seemed to be an, an indication that everyone was interested in attending. Is that still the case?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so everyone is eligible to be a voting member? I did it last year, so I'll step down, let someone else do it. So any, anybody really, really want to do this? Any volunteers? All right, should we draw straws?
I think you get a T-shirt.
I can do that, I mean... I nominate Mr. Martinez to be our elected...
I'll second that.
And an alternate?
Okay, same motion, and Mrs. Carroll is the alternate.
I'll second.
They invite you to a seven fifteen AM meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, it is the last meeting of the conference.
Did you hear me?
It is the last, the last event of the conference on a Friday afternoon.
Oh, that came later.
That's fine, I'll do the city proud. All right.
I'll do roll call for the nomination of Julio Martinez and the alternative Nancy Carroll. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
So item seventeen, what I'd like to do is review our committee assignments, and I'd like to make some changes with the consents, consent of the council. So let's start with the transportation now. This is staff member alternate, who, do we know who that is right now? Is that Elizabeth?
Yes.
It is, okay. Well, before I start, does anyone want to volunteer, or does anyone would like to request a change from their current assignment? Okay. So Nancy, you'll, you'll stay as chair, and Elizabeth as the alternate. RTA, Nancy, since you're the alternate, I'd like to move you up to the representative, Do you want to be an alternate on that one, Mr. Lar? Can you do that? I don't know if it's, it's not a problem as far as a county conflict, right?
No, it's not a problem as far as conflict.
Time commitment?
Yeah, time permitting, I, I can do that, an alternate.
Nancy never misses meetings.
It's true.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd be happy to be an alternate and help support Ms. Carroll in that regard.
All right, and we'll leave RCTC the way it is. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, I don't see a reason to change that. Same thing with the Beaumont Cherry Valley Parks and Rec District. Water District looks good. School District looks good. Legislatively, he's on.
Fantastic.
Yes. City manager, mayor's breakfast, I'll keep doing that. And Erica, I'll keep doing that. Southern California Association of Governments, Mr. Martinez, I'd like to put you as representative on that one.
Okay.
Okay. And Nancy, you... And Nancy, you can stay as the alternate. Memorial Committee, I'd like to leave Mr. Martinez there. I can, I'll go ahead and be the alternate on that one. See no change in the Finance and Audit Committee. And I will start serving on the Economic Development Committee. And that'll, so that'll be me and Mr. Martinez. And I think that's it. So any questions, comments?
I have one question.
Sure.
Are we doing anything for the vacancy on the Economic Development Committee?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask that, when, do we have a process in place for that, like we did with the Finance Committee?
Yeah, we...
Is it specific, the vacancy, is it specific to being a developer?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah, it was.
So can staff reach out and find us a developer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve these changes.
Please, they'll move.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Next item is reimbursement of travel expenses to me, so I will step out. And Nancy, you may take your seat.
This is a request for reimbursement of travel expenses for the mayor for traveling to the California League of Cities meetings and the Erika meetings in the amount of $133.22 to be paid out of the council's travel expense budget. Are there any questions from any council members on that?
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement request in the amount of $133.22.
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Carroll?
Yes.
Does this take a, this doesn't take a 4-0 vote, right?
No.
Fantastic.
We'll move on to council reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Carroll.
I'm sorry, who we start with?
With you.
Okay. I attended the Cherry Festival Parade with Mayor White and Councilmember Martinez. And Councilmember Laura could not make that, but expressed his regrets, and it was a good turnout, better turnout than last year. It was really nice to see the bigger turnout. I also attended the T-NOW RTA meetings, the last couple of them. I'll be attending the budget meeting tomorrow morning. The T-NOW group is reviewing their bylaws and their committee assignments. They break into subcommittees so that they can get more task-oriented things done within the T-NOW group. And we have the largest transportation now group with RTA, so we have quite a reputation to keep up with that. And the, that's all I have to report.
All right, Mr. Laura.
Last week, we attended the Water Alliance Committee. And what they, what we had voted on for next fiscal year was to waive the membership fee, so there will be no membership fee or cost for the city next year. There's enough in reserves at this point in time to cover the business at hand, as well as, which is allowing us to waive the fee. Also wanted to remind everyone, Beaumont Cherry Valley Park and Recreation District is having their 45th year celebration on Friday, June 16th, 2017, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please wear your favorite sports attire. And just a shout out to the Beaumont High School girls softball team, made it to the semifinals, played a good, hard game. It was close, but fortunately, they fell to Santa Barbara. That's all I have.
You don't want to talk about your suggestion of the...
Your suggestion.
Your idea of conserving water?
Conservating water?
I guess we'll share that, save that for later.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor.
Mr. Martinez?
I attended the Beaumont Unified School District Retirement Recognition Dinner on the 17th of May to congratulate those deserving recipients. I attended the first joint general plan task meeting on the 22nd, and I'm pleased with the direction that Mr. Burris and Ramey and Associates are taking with this task. And I look forward to the first community task force, or community workshop we have on the 21st of June, I believe. I attended the new elementary school ceremony at Sundance on the 23rd. Very rewarding to see the direction of the school district with the new schools coming into our city. Attended the RCA meeting on the 5th of June. We approved the establishment of a National Wildlife Refuge within the boundaries of the MSHCP. We discussed the joint workshop coming up with the RCTC and the RCA in August. Our feature species of the month is the southern western pond turtle. We had a discussion on that, very interesting. And lastly, I do want to give special thanks to the Cherry Festival Association and its Board of Directors and the Executive Board, Mr. Duff. What a splendid job. It was just an extraordinary event. Congratulations to the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, with the parade and the pancake breakfast. It was truly a featured event for the city and the surrounding area. And it does take a tremendous amount of cooperation and coordination with all those clubs and individuals to get an event like that going. And it was, to me, it was just a tremendous success, and I want to thank all of those involved again. Thanks.
Thank you. I, too, was in the parade. We, Mayor Pro Tim Carroll and I were on the Women's Club Fire Engine. And then that Friday night, I chased two 11-year-olds around the rides all night. That was a lot of fun. I did want to thank the chief for, your officers were out and about, and I appreciate that. It seemed like a great evening, I don't think there were any problems, everything seemed to be really well attended and well behaved. And then on Sunday, we went to the Berlin Concert. And Bob, I want to thank you for putting that all together, because that really came off really well done. I wasn't gonna mention, but you reminded me, the swim teams had, were both league champions of men's and women's high school swim team. And they had their awards banquet here in the gym, and it was, it was a great event. I went to show my son the offices in the back, and I didn't realize I was setting off an alarm. We're back there, my son says, what's that noise? I said, oh, I don't know, he goes, it sounds like an alarm. So anyways. Joint task meeting, we had, I think, 100% attendance. And I think it was really a good group of people, some really cross, a cross-section of the entire community. And also the new school site, that was, it's the first new school in quite some time. I think Tarryland Hills was the last one, right? So, okay.
Do you remember the name?
I guess it's called the first, it's a new school number one?
Excellent.
Okay. All right, and now we'll move on to the treasurer report.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, and the city...
I have a question, if I could, for the treasurer. How is your software training going?
My what?
Your training on the financial software?
It's going well.
Good.
I'm getting all kinds of reports.
Excellent.
Some are working, some are not.
Glitches.
All right, city manager report.
For the 45th anniversary event, I do have some wear, particularly for Councilmember Laura. Make sure you're properly dressed for the event, I have some Bronco gear for you to be able to...
I was gonna say Ranger or something.
I think it's prohibited at this event. You're welcome to try to wear it.
So, you know, again, happy to dress any of the rest of you either. I've got, I do have some Ranger gear for you as well.
Maybe some Dallas Stars and stuff. Just let me know what you need.
I think they want a sporting attire, not casual wear.
That's it, sir.
I hope with your family now California residents, that your son and daughter will start looking at the Angels and the Los Angeles Chargers.
Yeah, yeah.
So anyways.
Blue and white helmets just don't look right.
City clerk report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, city attorney report?
Nothing to report.
And do we have any suggestions for future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting of June 6, 2017, at 8:26.